I'm calling to order the regular governing board meeting of Jefferson Elementary School District, Wednesday, December 10th, 2014. And could we have members present, please?
Joseph Attadi, Marie Brizwella.
Here.
Here.
Joseph Waters.
Here.
Rebecca Douglas.
Here. And we have some students from the school here to meet us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin! Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, girls.
Okay, before we approve the agenda, I would like to make in addition, actually, where exactly should we put this?
I would pick at the first thing, General Functions.
Okay, for the very first thing, under General Functions, we would like to add that we will hold a brief discussion of whether a school should be closed tomorrow.
And I would like to add, just for the record, that this is for an emergency placement. We are able, under an emergency, to add items to a board meeting.
Julie, who lives and takes a vote on it?
Yes, correct.
I'd like to make a motion that we add to a General Functions this evening the item of the closure of schools, possibility of closure of schools tomorrow.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that being added to the agenda, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion, we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, this time we have a public hearing on the district's sufficiency of pupils' textbooks. We are opening that hearing at 7:04 PM. And would you like to?
I can address it.
Okay, thank you.
So, every year we are required to report to the public if we have sufficient textbooks for students. In September, one publisher was unable to deliver the textbooks that we needed for our students, but we now have them all, and so we're reporting that we do have all the textbooks that we need for our students. And then we're holding a public hearing.
Right. So, at this time, if there's anybody who wishes to address the board on this matter, this is the opportunity. I have no speaker cards, and therefore we will close the public hearing at 7:05 PM. And this brings us to our great feature of the evening, a presentation on the music team at Woodrow Wilson Elementary School. And I believe Mr. Allen, the principal of Woodrow, has a few things to say and can lead us on to this.
This evening I have the pleasure of introducing our music team. We've been very fortunate to have the music team here for the past three years, and our performers tonight are either in their second or third year as musicians. Some started in second grade, some started in third grade, and I think you're going to be quite impressed with the progress that they've made in just a few short years. And we're very hopeful that this partnership continues for many years to come. And I'm also happy to introduce Mr. Seth Mauser, who's the director of the music team at Woodrow. Thank you very much, and enjoy the show.
I greatly appreciate your interest in what we're doing here. And I'd like to just, first of all, have our chamber orchestra students come, take your places, and their leader, Ms. Margaret. While they're coming in, I'll just tell you that, yes, some of our students have been playing for a little over two years, and actually, our cello students have only been playing for a little over one year. A couple of them have previously played violin, but basically, they've only been playing one year. So, we have about half of our faculty here, and one of our conductors is Ms. Margaret Gonzalez, who recently joined the music team. So now, Ms. Margaret will lead us in two short words, a folk song called "Sweet Betsy" from Pike, followed by "Silent Night." So, our next orchestra leader for this part of the program is Ms. Christina Wong, who is a graduate of the Juilliard School of Music in New York, as well as the Cleveland Institute of Music. She is the principal viola player of the South Bay Symphony Orchestra, and a very active teacher. So I think she's going to start with an arrangement of "Frosty the Snowman," followed by Rudolph. And this is kind of my new passion here. We have forty-five children in the music team this year, and each child receives over five hours per week of instruction and rehearsal time after school. We have a student-faculty ratio of eight to one. I also want to mention our wonderful singing teacher is on maternity leave. Otherwise, the performance would be longer. She has quite a repertoire with them. Singing and musicianship training has been a key component of our program. Our specialized singing teachers employ a world-renowned method of childhood music education, using games, dances, and songs in a carefully structured curriculum to develop musical ability. I think it would be absolutely wonderful if all the first and second graders here could receive even a half hour per week of that particular music class, for at least a year, before any choose to learn an instrument. Yes, I believe that if these children could get that kind of training, even a half hour per week, starting at a young age, it'll yield a lot more cognitive benefits, as well as musical ability. In June 2013, we analyzed the change in the California Standardized Test Scores after one year in music team. We compared it to a control group with the same number of boys and girls from each teacher's classrooms, a very carefully matched control group. The math scores for music children were ten percent higher, and the reading scores were five percent higher for our music kids compared to the control group. As you know, we could not get the test scores this year, so we developed a thirty-six-question survey for the kids. Over the past year, this survey indicated improvements in self-esteem and sense of community within the music team. We are trying to strengthen community here, at the school and beyond. We often hold a reception after concerts, and this Saturday, fourteen of these children, as well as our faculty, will perform at the Maitri Hospice in San Francisco this Saturday afternoon. We do plan to have more performances around Daly City and elsewhere, as an incentive for the children and to show people our work. I manage music team as a full-time volunteer. Our fiscal sponsor provides nonprofit status, insurance, and other services, but we have to raise all the money ourselves. Fundraising has been quite challenging. We are too small for many foundations, and others just do not fund in San Mateo County. Ironically, the San Mateo County Arts Commission just denied us funding because our staff doesn't actually live in this county. At any rate, we are unable to add more children in September, so the current second-grade children here have not had this opportunity, although a number of their parents have asked. Before planning to add a class of fifteen to twenty children, we need to raise at least twenty-five thousand dollars in increased revenue to cover a full year in our program. Seventy percent of the music team budget pays for our dedicated professional teachers, with the remaining thirty percent covering costs for musical instruments, supplies, and operating expenses. So I'm reaching out to our current partners and new potential supporters to make this plan a reality. As leaders in this community, I'm asking you to help find funding so we may give this great opportunity to more children. Private donations are fully tax deductible, and they could be corporate, whatever. We have a good new website with links to the TV coverage, it's under our News and Events page, as well as our own short video, which is quite effective. So, you know, I appreciate if you know anyone to share our website with them, and Supervisor Vidalas has passed out my card, which has the link, the information for our website. And other than that, I'm thrilled that you came here to watch our group, and I wish you all a wonderful holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Margaret. I want to say we do have certificates for all these students. Because there are so many, we will give them to Mr. Brian Allen to pass out to the students, probably whenever is convenient for him. And to thank all of you students for coming, that was, and just saying, and to the staff or faculty of the music program, I am absolutely blown away. That was amazing, and it's what a wonderful program, and I can't begin to express our appreciation for it.
Well, I just want to say I've always been a great supporter of the arts, especially music, and I'm going to tell you, to the students, you were absolutely fabulous, and I hope that you will continue your studies of music. I know that you will have a head start, especially when you get to our upper grades, where they have more band opportunities, but never lose your love for music. That is tremendous. I have a granddaughter who's been doing it for years, and now she's going to be receiving a scholarship. And each of you can someday receive a scholarship in music if you keep this going. And as far as your outreach for support, I think that each of us can probably try to do what we can to pass the word around, and perhaps we can talk to you about different ways that you can get into the community so that other people will be able to support these children, because I know not all the parents can just do this alone. So, thank you to the parents for allowing your children to participate. You should be very proud of them, because I really am. They're wonderful. Thank you for coming.
Express our appreciation. We do have, at this time, our communications, and so I'm going to give our administrators a chance to also express their...
But can we give a few?
I was going to, I think maybe we could dismiss the children after we do the comments, but since I thought some of you might like to pass on kudos as well.
Well, I'm just going, yeah, I'd like to say that you guys play beautifully. When I saw your little violins up there, they're just so cute, and the music was great. You guys are learning something really special, and I hope that you continue it for many years into the future.
I also just wanted to say bravo, nice job, and what a great program. Exciting to see in one of our schools.
I'd like to thank the students for such an enjoyable performance. It really kind of kicks the holiday season off, so thank you for that, and of course, for the staff of Music Team SF, and for Mr. Allen. I know it takes quite a bit to get this all coordinated, so thank you all.
If you want to say anything to them, we can allow the children to do...
Yeah, I'll do this right now. So, yes, thank you again to Mr. Mauser and Mr. Allen for cultivating this partnership over the last several years. It is a unique partnership, and we're very proud to be able to host it. I will be, for the board's information, I will be meeting with Mr. Mauser in the coming beginning of the new year to discuss ways of expanding, brainstorm ways to expand the program here at Woodrow, as he does have a waitlist, and also consider ways that students who are fifth graders moving on to the middle school can continue their music education in strings, which we don't really have a program at the middle school for. So, we are definitely, the music team is committed to these students continuing the music education in strings, and we just sort of have to figure out the best way to make it happen. And as he did mention it, he mentioned to me the other day as I came by, this is approximately a twelve hundred dollar per student program, and I think that's on the low end of what you can do for the quality that they're getting. And having paid for music education for many years without scholarship, this is an excellent, excellent way of investing in our future. So, if we know anybody that is philanthropist or loves to give little bits here and there, that have an older string instrument at home that's still in good working condition, Music Team can accept that.
At this time, I think we could dismiss the children to take their instruments and put them away wherever they're supposed to. I do want to say, you are, of course, free to take your children and go home. You may want to wait just a few minutes until we complete our discussion of whether there will be a school closure tomorrow, since that would give you a advance notice if we do make that decision. Do you need us to take a recess while the children take care of their instruments, or are they filing out, do they have to put them away here, or are they...
No, no, we're going to go back to the classroom and put them away.
Okay, so we'll just pause for just a moment while you guys go ahead and exit. This evening, I believe we did get our administrator comments. We have board member acknowledging the commendations for the chair this evening.
This evening I went to City, Daly City Hall, because they were honoring council member Carol Klapp, because she is retiring from being a city councilperson, and it was standing room only, and some very wonderful comments and resolutions were presented to her for her many years of service. I know she's been very active in participating and meeting with schools and students, and so I just wanted to mention that we're very proud of her accomplishments.
Well, while there's still a few music students left, I would like to commend them once again on the performance tonight, and thank all the parents for coming out tonight as well.
I also appreciate that you all came out this evening, and want to thank you for that. I wanted to mention, I was privileged to see on last Friday, one of the wonderful ways in which our district is helping to train our teachers, in this case, it was junior high teachers, but we're doing this throughout, or on how, to do this particular case, it was instruction in how to bring English learning, for English language learners, into the everyday classroom, what kind of tactics and procedures. It was absolutely fascinating, and I want to just give a commendation to our head of the ELA department, Mr. Benjamin Moser, and his fellow presenters at that, Rachel Paget and Lisa Rizzo.
Another comment, at City Hall this evening, the entertainment for the evening, which really thrilled me a lot, was students from Robinson School, Middle School, which is actually in Brisbane School District, however, on the property of, oh, two, Bayshore School District, but it's on the property of Daly City, and they were tremendous. That was a huge group of students that were getting together, learning to sing, not only in a class, but also after school, and I thought that would be wonderful if we did have more of that in our schools as well, because whenever you bring music to children, it lights up their hearts, and they do better in education.
Yes, I think adding more music instruction and arts in general into our curriculum will have to be a topic of discussion. I do have a card, I think, a card here for somebody wishing to address the board, Melinda Dart, did you want this one as well?
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Melinda Dart, president of American Federation of Teachers, thirty-two sixty-seven, and I was at this school a teacher for twenty-two years. So, it is wonderful for me to see this orchestra tonight, and I'd like to thank Brian Allen and all the teachers here who worked so hard to make the connections, to add enrichment to the school like this, and I'd like to thank the Music Team SF, and also teacher Lucy Shaining, a teacher from Daniel Webster, who first connected Brian Allen with this program, and I'd like to thank Mr. Mauser for his hard work, and Ms. Margaret, and the other teachers. And the children were fantastic. It's too bad they're not here anymore, because I'd like to congratulate them on their performance. I think a few are. I've never heard such beautiful music here at Woodrow Wilson. It's really amazing, and thank you to the parents who brought, who came out and brought them. And I want to say that not only does music help test scores, but music and art are often the hooks that help students love school and engage in school and thrive at school and keep them going to school later in life. And so I hope that we can find it in our community, to find twenty-five thousand dollars to keep this program going and to add students to it next year. We should be able to do that, right? We should be able to do that. We really should. And I will help with that effort however I can. Our union helps to support the schools, and we will do what we can to help raise money for this effort as well, because this is, this is really important, right? And it takes all of us, it takes a community to make this kind of enrichment happen, right? So together we will do it, and music will keep on going at Woodrow Wilson. Thank you.
We got a little out of order. Did you have anything to go through? No, okay. So that does bring us to our emergency discussion of the weather conditions and possibility of school closure. I want to say I brought this up because... I want to say I brought this up because I've been getting messages through places like San Francisco State and the meteorology department there pointing out that the weather event is apt to peak right at the morning commute tomorrow. And that raises concerns for both simply the functioning of our community and the safety of our students if we have a lot of people on the road right when the high winds predicted possibly up to 80 miles an hour and heavy rains are peaking. So, to be honest, I don't know whether closing is the right choice. We could make that decision and find that it's sprinkling with a light breeze tomorrow. I do understand a little bit about how weather forecasting works. We could also find that it really is the major event that's predicted, and that is probably the more likely outcome. So I wanted to solicit...
Yeah, and I, if you wouldn't mind, I just want to give you a bit of background in terms of what has, what conversations have been held. We have been in conversation with the County Office of Education, who has been in conversation with the Office of Emerging Management Services all afternoon on this topic specifically, as other larger school systems and even smaller ones in the North Bay have decided to close. We, the guidance that we received was that unless we had a good known reason to close schools, we shouldn't consider it, although it is a local decision to do so. So as of this afternoon, I decided that we would not close schools. I did send a message out to families, both through voicemail and email, letting families know that we, as of that time, we would be open, but that could very likely change. Also acknowledging that families know best what's the safest option for their family. And if they felt unsafe leaving their home or felt like conditions were such that they needed to stay home, that we understand that. One of the other considerations that I had is that in our community, we have many families who will need to go to work tomorrow and don't have the option to stay home and take care of their students. And school is sometimes a safer place for many of our students. So I wanted to keep that as an option as well. I do acknowledge we will not have high attendance tomorrow. That's fine, but the students felt like the students who would be here would be the ones who needed to be here. Because if they didn't need to be here, they would be home or with somebody else who could take care of them. So that was what I communicated to families. I did let them know that we would get back to them at the earliest possible time if the decision changed.
So I wanted the feeling of other members of the board on this.
I've sort of had mixed feelings on it, because sometimes they make a big deal on something's coming and it doesn't come. On the other hand, was it last week? We had a pretty bad rain, and in our, the area that I live, there was flooding. And we actually had to have emergency services trying to help the people. If any of you know that, if any of you are driving along Park Plaza, it is quite a dip. So when it floods, it floods big time. This storm that they're predicting is supposed to be bigger than the one before. But will it reach us, we're not quite sure. I agree with Mr. Vidalis, it's kind of hard to possibly close a school and it may not be necessary. At the same time, if any of you feel that you will be in danger driving in that rain, or your child, then it's best that you decide to keep your child home. I, I guess none of us know until it starts. And I do know that more people drive when it rains than walk, because they don't want to get wet. And also, there's a lot of traffic accidents that happen. So this is truly going to have to be a parent's decision if, if the schools are open. And, I don't know, so I wish it would start raining right now and it would tell me. I mean, start now, so we would know.
I do plan on being in the office tomorrow morning before 6:00 and after 5:30. So somewhere in that timeframe to help make a determination if that's necessary.
But I appreciate...
Caution, just because, let's be honest, we are in California. And when we get that first rain, we have issues driving, let's just say that. And if this storm really is as intense as predicted, I would rather have everybody safe.
Yeah, I agree with everything that's been said. I think it's better safe than sorry. We don't know what's gonna happen, but have you heard, or is there any communication with the teachers so far about this? They got the same exact...
I know at the college level even, they're talking about the possibility of...
They have in fact closed San Francisco State, starting at 10:00 tonight until 8:00 Friday morning. I did get the message on that. And the Pacifica School District, if anybody has an interest there, is closed.
And Pacifica has greater, even greater issues than us. But I would like to tell anybody here, Daly City employees already have put together several hundred sandbags. And in case you have property that's very low to the ground, which means water does come in to either bother your garage or your resident, immediately call Daly City, and they will get the sandbags out to you right away. And if you're near Broadmoor, we have quite a few sandbags. And today, someone came and, two men came and took them all. Because they're the area on 88th Street that is flooded, was flooded last week. So don't hesitate if you need help to make that phone call immediately to get help at your house. That's just in case, I just publicly...
Yeah, I want to return to this. I mean, it strikes me that, that Mr. Vidalis may have already made the appropriate call, which is say that the schools will be open and available, but the parents should make a reasoned decision about whether children should come. Certainly, I appreciate the concern that there are families that don't have any other arrangement for their children, and that is a concern. I don't want anybody to feel like they have to...
Yes, and I, I mean, one possible thing that we could do, if this is okay with the board, is... So we have an opportunity, we have ways of communicating with families electronically, through email and text. I can certainly arrange for something like that to go out tonight. I would not want an automatic call to go out after this meeting and before 6:00 a.m., just because it's not friendly. But I can arrange for a voice call to go out at 6:00 a.m. with any additional information. So we could say school is open, but use your judgment if you want to be on the roads. We, nobody's going to be penalized for missing school.
I think that's an important message to have on that, and I would be, I would be good with that, so that we have these, these places available to, to children and anybody, you know, as needed, without anybody feeling like they have to or their child will be in trouble.
How, how do any of the parents hearing this right now, how do you feel about this? Yes?
I personally feel that my child's safety is more important than anything. If last week's rain didn't bother anybody, it bothered me, there was a lot of rain, there was flooding. I drive for the San Francisco District, and all of the schools tomorrow are closing. And tomorrow I'm off, because there is no school, for about 95% of the school. And personally, I feel better. If San Francisco feels that they need to keep their kids at home and their teachers to be safe, then so should mine.
We do recognize that we have a little bit of a different transportation situation than San Francisco, where families have to crisscross the city. But, yeah, so I think, I think I would be comfortable giving you directions, Vidalis, to go with the, the schools will be open, but nobody will be penalized for not attending tomorrow. Therefore, leaving it in the hands of parents to, to make their own decision without any coercion.
And, Melinda Dart is here, right? Yes. Well, Linda, how do you feel about this? I just want to get this feel of everybody.
Our teachers are among those who have to come the farthest.
Yeah, they come from faraway land.
Some are very close, but some come from far away. It's true, so, so I've already, I've already heard of teachers that can't come tomorrow, and they will be out, and there will be substitutes. So there is already a problem with substitutes. It's hard to get substitutes. So I, you know, unfortunately, I can't say what that will mean, but I can predict that there will be some classes that aren't covered because of teachers not being able to get here. In all my years of being here, we only closed once, and it was the day after the '89 earthquake. And there was a day when we had no power at Woodrow, and we had high wind, and I had five kids in the class, and we sat by the window to read because there were no lights. It wasn't the best, it was kind of fun, like being in Little House in the Big Woods or something. But it was perhaps not the best use of instructional time. So if we were to have a lot of kids staying home tomorrow, and I don't know how you predict that, then that affects, you know, the quality of instruction. It's, it's difficult to deliver the full instruction that everybody needs. And I hear the parents expressing some fear. So, it's a very difficult call. It is a difficult call. Some parents may have to work, in which case, school is a safe place to be. I think that's what Mr. Vidalis is thinking of. But I know it will be a hard day with some teachers out. That's the best I can say about it.
It sounds like we have a consensus from the board on, on this. And I think because we do have a very full agenda, we should move on. So I think we can, we can go with that, that the schools will be open and students will not be penalized if their families choose to keep them home in light of the weather and road conditions.
And what would happen to a teacher who felt the same way driving across a bridge or driving from Buffalo Bay?
There are provisions for personal necessity leaves and the teacher absence.
To make sure everybody's safe.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. We do not want any of our teachers or staff putting themselves in danger to get here either. Go on record for saying that. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, this one is, at this time, I'm going to say that if you need to take your children home to finish homework and get to bed in a timely fashion, just in case you do come to school tomorrow, feel free to exit quietly as we continue with the meeting. So the next item on organization...
I have two and a half.
Each year, it is required under the education code to elect our officers, including president, vice president, clerk, and representative to the county committee on school district organization. And that is what we need to undertake at this time. I will ask, please, if you can exit quietly so that we can continue the meeting. So we will start with taking nominations and seconds for the position of board president, and I would like to nominate Shaquille Ali to that, that position.
Second.
Do we have any other nominations? Then, oh, do we do this as a roll call?
Well, let's do a voice vote, since that's what we've done in the past.
A, a voice vote rather than a roll call.
I'm sorry.
A roll call vote, yeah. So could we, yeah, we've, we've done it both ways. Let's go ahead and have a roll call vote for that. Do you have a motion or second?
Mrs. Brizwella?
Aye.
Mr. Ali?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Dr. Douglas?
Aye.
Mr. Ali? It's all yours. Annotated agenda.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Switch your waters to...
I don't think I started on mine.
But you don't want to grab mine. Who knows what I've got?
All right, first of all, I'd like to thank my colleagues for their confidence that I can hold down this office. And next, we will move on to nominations for the office of vice president.
I would like to nominate Joseph Waters to that position.
Second. All right, any other nominations? Uh, there was a second, yes. And we will have a roll call vote.
Mrs. Brizwella?
Aye.
Dr. Douglas?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mr. Ali?
Aye.
You want to say anything?
You're gonna put me on the spot now. Thanks for the confidence, I appreciate all that, and let's get rolling.
All right. All right, so now we'll take nominations for the office of clerk. All right, I'd like to nominate Marie Brizwella for clerk, second. All right. We'll take a roll call vote.
Mrs. Brizwella?
Yes.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Dr. Douglas?
Aye.
Mr. Ali?
Aye.
Now we'll take nominations for the office of representative on county committee on school district organization.
Make a nomination for Rebecca.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Brizwella?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Dr. Douglas?
Aye.
Mr. Ali?
Aye.
This is my, starting my fourth year on the board, and this has been the smoothest reorganization so far. So I'm really pleased that it's gone this way. Would you like to say anything?
At the moment, I'm just pleased that I don't have to talk anymore tonight, unless I really want to, because I keep coughing, and I do apologize for that.
So before we move on, Mr. Ali, I would like to present Dr. Douglas with the plaque in recognition of her outstanding leadership as president of the Board of Trustees.
Thank you, Mr. Vidalis. Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, do we have a, see?
So we're on the consent agenda now, so...
Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Sorry, I left my original agenda home, so I'm trying to remember. I had one that I wanted to take off. Is there one about the approval of the... Let me just find it, I apologize for this. Isn't there one on something to do with Ben Franklin?
Session, I believe.
Oh, then I'll do it then.
Okay.
So then I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have motions and a second already. Yeah.
Do we need a...
Glad you guys are fast.
Well, we don't need a roll call vote because there are no resolutions.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Governing board meeting dates for the year 2015. So we need to review and approve our, a, a proposed calendar of board meeting dates for the year 2015.
So just a brief speaking on this item in terms of which, what dates are being recommended. So again, they're, they are on the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month for every month, except in, in January. We, I put January 21st, which is the third Wednesday, partially because the second Wednesday comes too early to be able to get any agenda items ready with, with the winter vacation. And the fourth Wednesday, I'm out of town, and I love to come to board meetings, so I wanted to be here. So I recommend January 21st for that one. Then again, following the summer, the summer schedule, one meeting at the, the first meeting in July 2nd. I think that's what it is, was it the second? Oh, sorry, it's the fourth meeting, fourth week in July, and then the fourth week in August.
Right.
There will be a meeting the fourth week in July and the fourth week in August. One meeting in July, one meeting in August.
and sixty dollars and eighty-nine cents, and no funds have been held for a period of five years. Actually, funds have only been held for a little over one year. If we hold funds for more than five years, then we do have to return them, but that is not a problem that we have. So we are in compliance, and also, if any outside agency requests this information in advance, then I am, for a one-year period, supposed to let them know, and this has been posted as it's required, so.
So are we getting developer fees on all property, or isn't there a new thing that's changed a little bit from before? I mean, is there a stipulation on what we, when we can get it? And not on every remodel, not on every, is it something that the?
Properties that have increased square footage, and also some commercial properties. Commercial properties, we get a lot less per square foot. Right now, we get three dollars and thirty-six cents per square foot for residential properties, and fifty-four cents a square foot for commercial properties. And I don't know if that, I'm not sure I answered your question, though.
On new development?
New development, yes, we will get that, and.
Is there a lot right now, a lot of properties sold?
Well, the NAR.
That's going to be building really soon.
Yes, and we will get that.
Make sure we get that.
Matter of fact, we did the developer fee study, which you approved earlier this year, and we had it done faster, so that we, we wanted to make sure if they drew their permits, that we would have it for the higher fee already. And they did not draw our permits before this happened, so we will be getting the fees for all of those houses on the property that we used to own. I'm sorry, it's in the last check. Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
And then one other question, can we spend it on almost anything?
No, no, it is, we have to spend it on things that support increased enrollment in the district.
That was, I don't think that was mandatory before, for now, it's, yeah, that was a change. Thank you.
So what exactly are we approving?
We are approving the developer fee compliance report.
Report.
That we are in compliance with government code six-six-zero-zero-six.
All right.
As well as six-six-zero-zero-one.
Sorry, I'm making a motion to approve two thousand and thirteen, fourteen developer fee compliance pursuant to government code six-six-zero-zero-one.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. And here we go again. Fiscal year two thousand and thirteen, fourteen annual financial audit report for year ended June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen.
I believe this is my item.
Yep.
So we are contracting with VTD, Gavernik, Tryday, and Company to do our annual audits, and we have, we're doing both the audit of the district's financial position and statements, as well as bond audit, which is required for our bonds, since we had the fifty-five percent threshold for recording. With us tonight, Mr. Ahmad Garabi is not here with us tonight, because he had another district EDF, but we have Mr. Leonard Danna, and I would like to say that I have known Mr. Danna since nineteen eighty. And when I was in college. He was not in college anymore. I was, and also, I worked with him at Alexander Grant Company CPA firm when I graduated college, so.
That's right. I've known Julie for quite a long time, actually.
Yeah, yeah, that makes.
Probably longer than I want to say to myself, but that's true, yeah. And, thank you. Again, I'm Leonard Danna, I'm a partner with VTD, and again, as Julie had said, Ahmad, who is the account partner on this account, everybody schedules their board meetings at, you know, this week of the year, and so trying to, you know, get to every one of them is just impossible, so I'm covering for Ahmad. Actually, I have had some experience with the district, having been the district auditor several years ago, with Grant Thornton. But you have with you the, the audit reports, both the district financial audit report, as well as the bond, financial, and performance audit. I don't intend to go through every page of it, because it's a long document, but just to give you the highlights, first of all, what you hire auditors to do is to certify to your financial statements, to render an opinion on them, and our opinion is now considered, it is called an unmodified opinion, so it's a clean opinion on the financial statements. It is also, we also audit your state compliance, as well as your federal compliance. We had no issues with either one of those areas as well, so the opinion with respect, the opinions with respect to state and federal compliance are also unmodified. And you will notice that there are no financial statement findings, nor are there any state compliance or federal findings as well. So it's a clean audit, we didn't make any audit adjustments to the numbers, so that's, that's a good sign that your numbers that you're, that you're getting are the real thing. So that's, that's basically the financial audit. When we do the, the bond audit, the bond audit requires a financial audit to be performed on that particular resource, which is embedded in the building fund, if you will, Measure I is. And so there is a, there is a bond audit, our financial report, that, that shows the balance sheet and the income statement for the, for the bond, financial, for the, for that particular Measure I fund. But probably the more important thing, and the one that is really kind of, is really under Prop thirty-nine, is what everybody looks at, is the performance audit, which is essentially us going in and sampling expenditures, and making sure that the expenditures that are made out of that fund are within the scope of the ballot language of Measure I. In other words, you spent it on what you told the world that you were going to spend it on. And we took, I, I don't have the exact number, I know it's in there, so it's something on the order of eighty-something percent of the expenditures. We do take, take a fair, a high percentage of those amounts, partly because it's fairly easy to do, but we do take a high percentage, and we had no, no, no findings whatsoever as far as the spending of those funds. So that is an unmodified and clean report as well. So that's basically the reports. It's, you know, it's as clean as you can get them, I guess. And also, as, as always, whenever we do these, these reports to boards, it's your time to ask the auditor any kind of questions you may have, so if you have any, I'd be happy to try and answer them, and if I can, I'm sure Julie probably could, so, if there are any questions.
Yeah, on page eight?
Page eight of which report now?
The one for the bond.
Is this the bond?
If you combine these two together, we have four, over $400,000 under what the preliminary design was. So in any case, we do have Michelle Hickerson from Infinity, our rep from Infinity, that's over here, if you have any questions that you'd like to ask about the contract, the RFP, or anything else that I am not able to answer.
Any questions?
I have no questions.
All right, well, do we have a motion?
I would like to move that we approve the networking services agreement with Net Experts as listed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I will mention that this will be paid for by our Measure I bond funds.
Or sometimes our state funds.
But it is not paid for on the general fund.
Correct.
Item number eight, approval of 2013-14 Developer Fee Compliance Pursuant to Government Code 66001.
That would be my item. Every year, we collect developer fees that are assessed on either new houses or remodels, extensions of houses, and those developer fees are meant to help support the growing needs of enrollment in the district. Last year, we have to report this within 180 days after closing the books. That means this month. And so I am reporting to you that we received, we started out with a balance of just over $59,000 in the Developer Fee Fund 25. And we had revenues of developer fees of $104,000, interest of $9,000, and we had expenditures of just under $16,000. Those expenditures were on new furnishings for our increased enrollment. At the end, we have an balance of $156,860.89, and no funds have been held for a period of five years. Actually, funds have only been held for over one year. If we hold funds for more than five years, then we do have to return them, but that is not a problem that we have. So we are in compliance, and also if any outside agency requests this information in advance, then I am, for a one-year period, supposed to let them know, and this has been posted as it's required.
So are we getting developer fees on all property, or isn't there a new thing that's changed a little bit from before? I mean, is there a stipulation on what we, when we can get it? And not on every, not on every, is it something that the...
Properties that have increased square footage, and also some commercial properties. Commercial properties, we get a lot less per square foot. Right now, we get $3.36 per square foot for residential properties, and 54 cents a square foot for commercial properties. And I don't know if that, I'm not sure I answered your question, though.
On new development?
New development, yes, we will get that.
Is there a lot, right now, a lot of...
Well, the NAR.
...that's sold, that's going to be building really soon.
Yes, and we will get that.
Make sure we get that.
Matter of fact, we did the developer fee study, which you approved earlier this year, and we had it done faster, so that we wanted to make sure if they drew their permits, that we would have it for the higher fee already. And they did not draw our permits before this happened, so we will be getting the fees for all of those houses on the property that we used to own.
It's in our last check. I'm sorry? It's in the last check.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
And one question, can we spend it on almost anything?
No, no, it is, we have to spend it on things that support increased enrollment in the district.
That was, I don't think that was mandatory before, but now it's, yeah, that was a change.
Thank you.
So what exactly are we approving?
We are approving the Developer Fee Compliance Report.
Report.
That we are in compliance with Government Code 66006, as well as 66001.
Sorry, I'm making a motion to approve 2013-14 Developer Fee Compliance Pursuant to Government Code 66001.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And here we go again. Fiscal Year 2013-14 Annual Financial Audit Report for year ended June 30, 2014.
I believe this is my item.
Yep.
So we are contracting with VTD, Gavernik, Tryden, and Company to do our annual audits, and we have, we're doing both the audit of the district's financial position and statements, as well as bond audit, which is required for our bonds since we had the 55 percent threshold for voting. With us tonight, Mr. Ahmad Garabi is not here with us tonight because he had another district EDF, but we have Mr. Leonard Danna, and I would like to say that I have known Mr. Danna since 1980.
Oh.
And when I was in college...
Can I?
He was not in college anymore. I was, and also I worked with him at Alexander Grant Company CPA firm when I graduated college, so.
That's right. I've known Julie for quite a long time, actually.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
Probably longer than I want to say to myself, but that's true, yeah. And thank you. Again, I'm Leonard Danna, I'm a partner with VTD, and again, as Julie had said, Ahmad, who is the account partner on this account, everybody schedules their board meetings at, you know, this week of the year, and so trying to, you know, get to every one of them is just impossible, so I'm covering for Ahmad. Actually, I have had some experience with the district, having been the district auditor several years ago, where I was with Grant Thornton. But you have with you the audit reports, both the district financial audit report, as well as the bond, financial, and performance audit. I don't intend to go through every page of it, because it's a long document, but just to give you the highlights, first of all, what you hire auditors to do is to certify to your financial statements, to render an opinion on them, and our opinion is now considered, it is called an unmodified opinion, so it's a clean opinion on the financial statements. It is also, we also audit your state compliance, as well as your federal compliance. We had no issues with either one of those areas as well, so the opinion with respect, the opinions with respect to state and federal compliance are also unmodified. And you will notice that there are no financial statement findings, nor are there any state compliance or federal findings as well. So it's a clean audit, we didn't make any audit adjustments to the numbers, so that's a good sign that your numbers that you're getting are the real thing. So that's basically the financial audit. When we do the bond audit, the bond audit requires a financial audit to be performed on that particular resource, which is embedded in the building fund, if you will, Measure I is. And so there is a, there is a bond audit, our financial report, that shows the balance sheet and the income statement for the, for the bond, financial, for that particular Measure I fund. But probably the more important thing, and the one that is really kind of, is really under Prop 39, is what everybody looks at, is the performance audit, which is essentially us going in and sampling expenditures and making sure that the expenditures that are made out of that fund are within the scope of the ballot language of Measure I. In other words, you spent it on what you told the world that you were going to spend it on. And we took, I don't have the exact number, I know it's in there, it's something on the order of 80-something percent of the expenditures. We do take a fair, a high percentage of those amounts, partly because it's fairly easy to do, but we do take a high percentage, and we had no findings whatsoever as far as the spending of those funds. So that is an unmodified and clean report as well. So that's basically the reports. It's, you know, it's as clean as you can get them, I guess. And also, as always, whenever we do these reports to boards, it's your time to ask the auditor any kind of questions you may have, so if you have any, I'd be happy to try and answer them, and if I can, I'm sure Julie probably could, so if there are any questions.
Yeah, on page eight?
Page eight of which report now?
The one for the bond.
Is this the bond, bond report? Okay. Hold on a second, I gotta get to it.
And we just got this now, so excuse me for asking, maybe if I read it...
Go ahead, go ahead. What are you asking for?
Is it under litigation? What is that exactly?
Generally, what we put in there is, we put, all districts put in a footnote that basically says, yeah, during the normal course of business, we are subject, you know, we can get sued, there could be litigation, but nothing out there right now poses any material threat to the district's finances. You would be required to disclose something if there was a material item out there that would cause a material impact to the financials of the district, but there isn't any that we can see out there.
I wasn't sure what it meant.
Yeah, that's okay. Perfectly fine.
And I really haven't had a chance to look at the rest, but you just stood there looking at litigation.
Usually, people that read these reports, what they know how to do, they go to the back of the report to see if there's any findings, that's the big thing.
Yeah, I know, and that's what I was starting to do, but it just stopped on...
None reported.
Yeah, yeah, see, none reported there.
No, but it just sort of stopped on that page.
Yeah, okay.
By accident, I think. Okay. Yeah, and I'm sure it's, it's good.
Well, I appreciate that you do this for us, and doubly appreciate that you do it, and I don't have to.
Not a problem. Not a problem.
Thanks for the good news, and we have another motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the, sorry, the fiscal year 13-14 Annual Financial Audit Report for the year ended June 30, 2014.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the next item?
Thank you, Mr. Danna.
Fiscal Year 2014 to review.
Okay, so I, this is coming, yes, I will try to make this...
You'll need to speak closer to the microphone, so.
I do?
Yes.
I will try to make this quicker for you. Normally, this is actually a little bit longer than I would normally do for the first interim, and the reason why is because as board members, you are stewards of district funds, and there's just additional information that, you know, I want to make sure that I inform you of, and so that's what I'm going to do for you. So on page two, just basically because we still, you know, some board members are still relatively new, and even if they're not, it's good to know, the district is required to certify twice a year their financial position of the current year and the two out-years, fiscal out-years. And they're known as the interim reports, the first interim and the second. This is the first interim. The first interim is a snapshot of time ending July, I mean, October 31, 2014, and the second one is, the second interim, which is January, yes, January 31 of 2015. So this is the first interim, and, let's see, with this interim, we present the 15-16 and 16-17 multi-year projection, and that's part of the official report. And then in this presentation, the year 17-18 is included, and that's just for a little extra information for you. So then if you go to page three, I just want to reiterate what the original budget, the adopted budget was based on, just the major things. First off, the most important thing for, the most important change is that for the first time, the 14-15 budget was not only built on the LCFF, the Local Control Funding Formula, but it was also tied to the LCAP, the Local Control Accountability Plan. And you all know what that is, and it's developed, and that is how we will be adopting the budgets in the future, tying these two together. So in that budget, we had COLA of 0.85 percent, and we had GAAP funding. Now, the GAAP funding is basically with the LCFF, Local Control Funding Formula, there's a certain amount of money that we're supposed to be getting, and that is the target. And then there's the amount that we are getting, our floor amount. The difference between the floor amount and the target is what's called the GAAP, and the state determines what it can fund on that GAAP on a yearly basis. And for this current year, the budget was built on 28.05 percent of that GAAP being funded. Additionally, there's the unduplicated count, which our district has 70, had 73.68 percent that was budgeted into the adopted budget. Included in the budget as well was an increase in STIRS and PERS contributions on the district side. As you know, the budget was adopted with that at the very end, right before the state adopted the budget, they said that they were going to increase the STIRS and PERS contributions, particularly the STIRS, that PERS we already knew about, to fund the unfunded liability in the 30-year plan. So I also want to let you know, after adopting this budget, we still have a 12, 12.7 million-dollar gap in the funding of the target. So if we were to get 100 percent of the target right now, which we technically do right now, we would have almost $13 million more in money. And compared to where we were in '07-'08, and '07-'08 was the last good year before the crash came, and then, as you know, when the crash came, we had a deficit factor that was applied, and we were, at the end, we were getting 78 cents on the dollar, and also we didn't get COLA for many years. If we got what we were getting in 1907-'08, 2007-'08, and we were applying COLA to each, and we didn't get deficit, and we applied COLA to each year, then what we are getting this year, we would be put at being funded where we should be funded in 1908-'09.
2009.
I'm sorry. 2008-'09. I messed up that. Okay, so I'm thinking about how old I am. In 2008-'09, so in other words, we are one year beyond where we were in '07-'08. But that means that, basically, it's like the deficit factor is gone, and that we got funding for the COLA in '08-'09, and that's kind of where we are. So basically, what we're missing is COLA from '09-10 to through 14-15. And so that would be, where we are today is 4.4 million dollars behind where we should be today if we didn't have this LCFF. So that when I say 12.5 million dollars to the target, the difference between the 12.5 million less the 4.4 million leaves us 8.3 million additional funds that we will be getting, that we would be getting above where we, where we should be today. So we're only 4.4 behind where we should be if we went the old way, and if we funded the target, we would be 8.3 million beyond that. So basically, that's what the district's additional funds, because of the new LCFF funding formula, we will have an additional 8.3 million dollars to fund the more programs and such, which we're doing, okay? So it's not more, we're already on that road. So we go on to page four, we're kind of going back to what the interim report is normally about, and that is, I wanted to explain to you the difference between the revenues when we adopted the budget and the revenues now, and then the expenditures when we adopted the budget and the expenditures now, and what those changes are. So this page, on page four, is how the revenues have changed, and you can see the graph there, and to the right, it says the major areas of the change in revenues. So we are $413,000 ahead of where we were when we adopted the budget. And the next page will have the explanation of all these, the 306,000, the 432,000 that you see off to the right. So first off is the revenue limit in the LCFF. We had 306, almost $307,000 more in that, and the reason for that is, when I told you that we adopted the budget with the GAAP funding of 28.05 percent, that GAAP funding, when the state passed the budget, increased to 29.56 percent. So that increased our GAAP funding. Our GAAP funding, our GAAP funding for this year was $5,344,000 and some change. That is the additional funds that we received this year over last year.
Five million...
Five million, 344,388. That's the GAAP funding portion. If you recall, last year, especially with Mr. Ali, when I talked about all the expenditures that we were going to be having, and that we were going to be spending some of our reserves, because I said that, you know, the years will be catching up with us, this is their funding, and then the following years will have a catch-up. But they did make good on the funding and gave us even a little bit more, so that is definitely appreciated. We did have a decrease in enrollment, however, and, which caused a decrease in ADA of 59.17 percent. That is already taken into consideration. So when we have, we have the plus for the GAAP funding, although this is not going to be a negative for us this year, because we have what's called declining enrollment protection. So we will get funding at the same ADA level that we had last year this year. Next year, we will have decreased funding, but we'll see that in the multi-year projection. The state revenues, we have an additional $433,000. Most of that happens to come from the one-time block grant payout that all districts got. This is in addition to the regular block grant that we're getting for mandated costs, so that, that accounts for the majority of the $433,000 extra there. Local revenues, $85,000 more than what was budgeted, and that's coming mostly from donations, site donations, as well as the homework center grant. And then this last one is an increase in contributions to restricted programs. And when there's an increase in contributions, that means it's a decrease in revenues. So that decrease in revenues of $411,000, don't panic about that, the majority of that is going on to the ongoing and major maintenance, where in the past, we were always supposed to have 3% to ongoing and major maintenance, a contribution of that, and the state let us have a smaller amount, 1%, earlier, and we're not required to have the 3% now, but we do feel it's prudent to have the 3%, and since we have that available, and we want our schools to be in good repair, we went ahead and moved those funds to the routine restricted maintenance. And then we saved a little bit of money on, well, actually, a little bit more than a little bit, a couple hundred thousand dollars, on restructuring of some of our special ed positions. And so that, we're doing everything that we wanted to do, but through the restructuring at the beginning of the year, we're not exactly sure of what's going to happen and what's not going to happen, and so there was a little bit of savings there. All in all, the interim report has additional revenues of $413,000 in the general fund. So we get to the next page, page six, and that's going to show the graph of the changes in expenditures from the adopted budget to the first interim report. And if you look at the, on the far right, it says the different codes, so the 1,000 codes are certificated salaries, 2,000 classified salaries, 3,000 are benefits, 4,000 is our supplies, 5,000 is our services, 6,000 are other, kind of like a capital outgo, and then the 7,000 is our other outgo. And so if you look at it, you're, wow, oh, wow, $8 million more in expenditures. If you recall, we opened up Fund 20 for our OPEB, which is our other post-employment benefits, so that we can, we can fund our retiree medical benefits, that liability that's out there. This funds a great portion of it, it does not fund it all, but the 8 million is like a super good start, and we just had our OPEB report redone, and where it was 16 million before, it's gone down to 12, and the reason why it's gone down to 12, one of the major reasons is because of, when we went from HealthNet to Anthem Blue Cross, and our rates became much more favorable, the old OPEB report was based on escalating health benefits. As HealthNet was shown, we expected it from HealthNet, and because we went over to Anthem Blue Cross, it's more affordable. So the long range of that has caused our liability to be reduced to 12 million instead of 16. So we have $8 million there. In any case, page seven shows you how these expenditures change. So first off, we have the certificated expenditures. In the adopted budget, we had additional FTE for positions, classroom positions, that we ended up not needing, and some of it in part was because of the declining enrollment. We didn't need all the positions. And also, some of it was some site funds, where school sites were with their new supplemental and concentration grant funds, wanted to bring in some additional staff, and of course, there were a lot of things they were trying to do, and they couldn't do everything, so some, they transferred some of their monies around, and so some of the monies ended up getting transferred into the supplies and services section. But the majority of it is because of the, the lack of a need for some of the FTE that we had originally planned. But we do have additional positions, too, and one of them is like the math coach and the EL coach, and the IT director, because we're going to be bringing more curriculum into IT, which is in the LCAP plan. So also, the STIRS rate that was budgeted at 9.5 percent was reduced by the state to 8.88 percent for this current year. That in itself was a savings of $188,000 to the district. I mean, it looks like a small amount, going from 9.5 to 8.88, but it's a lot of money. And then also, a reduction in our costs for workers' compensation, that reduced from 3.4 percent to almost 3%, it's 2.997, 9793. That was a savings of $139,000. Just that little bit of workers' comp change is a big savings to the district as well. So that's why we have the million dollars in the certificated, well, it's not just certificated salaries, so certificated salaries, classified salaries, and the benefits, those combined. Then in the books and supplies, we also have a million dollars, and we have a million dollars of extra expenditures, and that is coming mostly from the carryover from the prior year, so where the school sites didn't spend all their funds, they're able to carry those funds over, not all of them, some of them. And then also from site donations, and some textbooks that we ended up purchasing, library program, to support the library program is in there. And then, as I said, there was some transferring of funds where some certificated staff weren't hired at the school site level, and they put those funds into supplies. $367,000 of additional cost in services, and again, the majority of that is from carryover amounts, where school sites have decided to put it into services, and site donations as well. Also, our liability insurance increased by $52,000. That's because once every, I think it's five years, they reevaluate our properties, and what a surprise, our properties are worth more than they were five years ago, so therefore our insurance costs more than it did five years ago. So, but we should write on this for another five years, until they're reevaluated. Additionally, if you recall, we added services with the HUA to provide us a little bit more services in making sure our attendance is high with tardy slips and stuff, tardy notices, and we have more expenditures in... And we have more expenditures in special ed transportation, as well as some legal fees and county software programs. Equipment increased, really insignificant amount, $6,000 is very little. And then, of course, the final increase, the $8 million for the OPEB, which is a transfer. We have those funds. Those funds are available in the future if the board decides to uncommit them. So if we ever did need them in the future, they are available to us. We would just have to go with unfunded liability, as we had in the past. So on to the next page. Page eight shows what our estimated end fund balance for this fiscal year would be at the closing of our '13-'14 books, was almost $19 million. But we have increased revenues of $400,000 and increase in expenditures of the $8 million. So that means that the end of this year, we'll have $11 million in the general fund unrestricted. And those funds, we earmark for reserve for economic uncertainty, some textbook reserves, and the amount that would be available for use would be $6.7 million at the end of this year. We would have those extra funds there, one-time funds. Okay, those are not ongoing funds. The next page, page nine, the assumptions for the multi-year projection, which we'll follow in the following pages. So for the year '15-'16, we budgeted, or we have included, gap funding of 7.9%, and we have the COLA of 2.19%. In the other years, we have the COLA of 2.14% and 2.5%. And these are the COLAs that the state believes that we'll have. For the gap funding, as I said, next year, we have 7.9%, the following year, 8.2%, and the following year, 8.4%. These are very conservative gap funding. This is what School Services of California is just recommending, if we want to be conservative and we would like to be conservative. I'd rather have a surprise plus than a surprise minus. The state is estimating 20.68% gap funding and a 25.48% gap funding in the next two years. And they don't say anything about the third year out. They only say two years. So as you can see, we, the multi-year projection is based on a very conservative gap funding. Additionally, we're not including COLA on any other state revenues. It's in the LCFF, but not in the other state revenues, for instance, special ed or even federal revenues. The unduplicated count, we adjusted to 73.71% for this interim report. However, I will say that the unduplicated count for the district, it appears, we don't have the CalPATS yet, but we have the unofficial download, will go down very slightly. So it looks like it's going to go down from about 73.71% to 73.29%. So there is, and we'll have that information once we kind of certify that, and then the second interim will have the appropriate unduplicated count. The out years for ADA, as I told you, the ADA went down 59 students, or ADA. And as I said, this year, it will not affect our revenue, but it will affect our revenue in the following years. And so in the multi-year projection, we have projected 59 ADA less. So that is already accounted for in the multi-year projection. We will look at, it does look like we have some declining enrollment, and looking at the trend and the number of eighth graders that will be leaving the district and the number of kindergarteners that we end up having, it looks like we might have more of a downward trend, but we'll see that more and adapt the second interim to reflect that. Also included in here is a step-in column, nothing else, just a step-in column, and, well, actually, not nothing else, two additional calendar days for the teachers, because that was going to be put on schedule, something that was negotiated. And so that is, the cost of those two additional days is already in the multi-year projection. And then the increase in STIRS and PERS contribution is also in the multi-year projection. And I will go over the STIRS and PERS part later on in this presentation. So if you flip to page 10, the lines that you might be most interested in looking at are the ones that basically are third going down with the numbers, where it says net increase slash decrease in fund balance. And as you can see, it looks like a $10 million decrease this year, and of course, again, that contribution of $8 million. Without that, it would be $1.8 million. As we already discussed, that we were going to front the funds strategically, using some of our reserves, to pay for the programs that we know we want to put into place and that we feel quite confident that the LCFF funding will support once we get more of it. So as you see, those years, we have basically, I'm going to say $1.8 million deficit spending this year, or 1.9, I won't say the extra eight, 1.4 in the following year, 1.8 in the following, 1.7 million in those years. Remember, this is on a very conservative LCFF gap funding level. So then, two lines, or three lines down more, the projected end fund balance, as you can see, it goes down some. And if you go to the next page, you'll see a graph of what, what the end fund balance looks like as it goes down. Don't let that panic you, it's okay. Again, I'll reiterate over and over again, we're doing a very conservative gap funding level. Now, on the following page, what I did is I used the CDE gap funding, so the one that they're saying we're going to get. And in the last year, I did it at 20% because they don't say anything. But because in '15-'16, they thought 20.68%, '16-'17, 25.48%, and then we put 20% in '17-'18. If that happens, and it may or may not, I think it's probably pretty close to what's more likely to happen, you can see what happens to our fund balance. So then, we start, we're able to start covering those additional expenditures that we have, that you have approved for us to do, as well as have some funds to be able to negotiate with our bargaining units and be able to kind of stay up with, you know, maybe catch up a little bit here. But I do want to point out, in '16-'17, at the end of 16, December '16-'17, the sales tax increase of, and actually, let's go to the next page, because it actually says it there. So things to think about and consider is, for instance, Prop 30, the monies that we're getting from Prop 30, which have saved the state and education right now. An extra 1/4% statewide sales tax will go away at the end of December 2016. Now, will that affect the money that's coming into the state coffers? Yes. Will that affect what they provide for the gap funding? I don't know. But that previous chart showed the gap funding of what they said they were going to do. I don't know what's going to happen when that goes away. And then the personal income tax will go away at the end of December 2018. And so these are things just to consider. I don't really know just how much the state is considering it. They kind of say they are, but when I look at what they're figuring, it doesn't seem to quite add up. So we'll see what happens as it gets closer, and, you know, hopefully, the state will still continue to be able to provide us with the gap funding that they said. Also then, Prop 2, the State and Education Raining Day Fund, passed by voters this last November. Of course, that limits the district's fund balance to be twice the minimum. So our minimum is 3%, and this would make our maximum 6%. That won't be enforced until a lot of things happen, and one of them is that we get all the money that's due to us, that we have a test one year when they do the Prop 98, which there has only been three test one years ever since they have started the revenue limit. And the capital gains revenues have to exceed 8%. So all those have to happen for it to be enforced. We will have to say why we have more than 6%. We have to just mention it, talk about why we feel it's important. But I want, I just really wanted you to know what 6% is. 6% is $3.3 million to the district. And if you look back at those charts, you can see that $3.3 million is really a lot less than we have that's there. The $3.3 million is, basically, is three weeks' worth of our expenditures, and it's 70% of one month's payroll. So $3.3 million doesn't really cover a lot, and it certainly doesn't do anything for cash flow. So I just wanted to point that out. Then we also have, like, a huge, huge part of what the state's done is the increase in STIRS and PERS contribution. I know that the PERS was done separately, not part of the state adoption, but the STIRS was. And I wanted to put this here, so I remind you about that. We're going from, for STIRS, we're going from 8.25% contribution from the district level to 2020-21, 19.1%. And that is an increase of 132%, and that is 11 percentage points more than it is now to go from 8.25 to 19.10. And with the PERS, it's going, PERS has always been flexible, but last year, we had 11.442%. This year, 11.771%, and that's going to go up to 28.4%. So that is a 79% increase over last year, and nearly 9 percentage points more. So the next page is going to show you, what does that mean dollar-wise for Jefferson? What that means is, I've underlined this word, additional. So these are, the change in percent, additional expenditures to Jefferson. So for the current year, the extra cost of STIRS and extra cost of PERS is only costing us $192,000 more. If you look on the right there, you see each year, that's not, I'm not adding a balance to a balance, that's the actual amount for each year. So for the public out there that can't see it, I'll just say this really quickly. '14-'15, the extra cost to the district is $192,000. '15-'16 is $747,000. '16-'17, an additional $1,418,000. '17-'18, $2,030,000. '18-'19, $2,642,000, round. '19-'20, $3,261,000 additional cost, just for that, for the year. And 2021, an additional $3,557,000 per year after that. So that, like I said, that's an enormous increase, and I want you to know that this LCFF gap funding is not taking this into consideration at all. The state is not giving us any more money to cover these expenditures. These expenditures are coming out of those funds. So I just felt that it was important that you keep that in mind. In the meantime, the multi-year projection has the funding up through the, these expenditures up through, what, '17-'18 included. And you see, we are able to do that. We're one of the more fortunate districts. So our recommendation is to approve the interim report. It's a positive certification, because we are able to meet our financial obligations in the current year and to subsequent years. And that is the requirement for the interim report. Do I have any questions?
Just one slight, I need a little bit of clarification. So on page five, you talk about the decrease in enrollment and the decrease in estimated attendance.
Okay, so it's a decrease in enrollment, right? So we didn't?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we have a, when enrollment goes down, right, then obviously, we're not going to get ADA for that.
Yeah, so my question is, we're paying for, page seven, A2A, Attention to Attendance. So how do those two things relate?
Okay. So attendance is on enrollment. So they're not doing anything for our enrollment. They're just making sure that the kids who are enrolled, that we are informing the families as quickly as possible when they start showing a pattern of not showing up at school for, you know, reasons that are not acceptable. I mean, we may not know the reasons, but if they're sick a lot, or they're just simply not, they're mostly for unexcused attendance, but also for somebody who's sick a lot, they're trying to inform the families, so that the enrollment that we have, the percentage of attendance for that enrollment will be high. And of course, there's the financial aspect of that, we get more money for it. And then, of course, there's the learning aspect of that. We want to have our kids get more for that, more out of the education. And if they're not going to get more out of education if they don't show up to school.
Do we have, you have an evaluation as to why we have a reduction in enrollment? Is that what the issue was, enrollment?
Yeah, we can't really guess as to why there are fewer students enrolling. One could be, you know, these students that are now starting to enroll were born at the beginning of the recession, so sometimes families choose to have, choose to postpone children till they're more stable. Also, our enrollment increased during the recession, because more families were cohabitating, living in the same home. I'm imagining that as folks get employed and wages increase, that families select to live in their own homes, and some of those homes may not be in Daly City, they may be in another community.
As well as?
There is a way to track, there is a way to track some of the?
We have a demographic, the demographic study was done.
No, when people take their children out of our schools, there usually is an explanation.
We're not losing so many students at the grade levels. It's mostly the incoming class is smaller than the class that leaves. Yes, the kindergarten class is smaller than the eighth-grade class that's leaving.
Yeah, and that's, that's where it is.
We don't, we looked at that, and we didn't see too much of a drop from one year to the next year for that cohort of students. So second grade, one year, to the third grade the following year, didn't lose. We're using it more in the incoming kindergarten class versus the exiting eighth-grade class.
Exactly.
And I think I might have missed it, but what exactly is the declining enrollment protection?
So what happens is the state, they recognize that, one positive thing that they do, sorry to be sarcastic, but they recognize that school districts are trying to make a budget for the following year. I'm just surprised that, you wouldn't have known that in these last five years. They recognize that we're trying to make, we're trying to budget the following year, and that you don't really know exactly how many students you're going to have in the following year, and so you don't, you're budgeting your expenditures based kind of on the students you have now. I mean, you can do all sorts of demographic studies, but in the end, you don't know how many are actually going to come in and not. And so what they do is they, they say for one year, you know, whatever, if you go down in enrollment, we won't, or attendance, we won't reduce your revenues below the attendance that you had the previous year. Then the, that way, then the following year, you know what your attendance is for that year, and you can now adjust your expenditure pattern down to that. And then if it goes down again, then at that new base, then they'll do that one more year, another year. So you're, you know, you've got a safe harbor for one year for the students that you've lost.
Sounds good. Thanks.
I must approve FY 2014-15, first interim budget review.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Melinda Dar.
Thank you. Yeah, I just had a couple of questions there. Regarding the ADA drop, is that district-wide or was it located?
And then regarding the drop in the FTE for certificated salaries, that's hard for me to understand because it seemed to me we added certificated positions. So you're saying because sites took on the expenditures of the extra positions, that dropped? I'm sorry, you want to speak?
So we did budget for those additional 60 students, so that's approximately three teachers there.
Okay.
So that we did hire, that we thought we might need to hire. Also, as Ms. Kessler submitted there, we did budget for all those increase in positions last year and they were in the budget.
Okay.
So we did hire more teachers. We do have a larger number of teacher force. There are some schools who were unable to fill their student support resource teacher positions because they didn't find the qualified candidates. So those positions were not filled and so that's why there's a drop in those salaries.
Okay.
They were moved, they decided to do something else with them.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Certificate personnel, item one, administrative appointment, 2014, 2015. Administration recommends approval of the following administrative appointment. Similia Cosala, program coordinator, special education, 205 days.
This is a position that, you know, when we had the special education study looking at how to reorganize the department, this is one of the positions that was recommended. And Ms. Cosala's been our inclusion specialist and she probably has more credentials and authorizations than any other teacher in our district. She's so well-versed in special education, so we're very lucky to find her and her willing to take on the new job.
Well, I would like to move, to move that we approve the appointment of Similia Cosala as program coordinator, special education. Yes, listed.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. Congratulations. That's okay, she can be corrected.
Yep. Item four, stipend for substitute coverage. The administration recommends that the board approve the agreement between AFT Local 3267 and JESD regarding substitute coverage. This agreement is for an increase in the stipend for teachers covering classes when a substitute is not available, from $31 to $40 effective January 5, 2015. Straightforward.
That's a awful lot of money, isn't it? Just kidding.
This is because there's a countywide shortage of substitute teachers, right?
In addition, we have raised our substitute, we've raised our substitute rate twice already and we've not done anything to the stipend. And this is when there is no substitute available. Students are in the middle school, teachers take on teaching that class during their prep period.
Okay.
In the elementary school, when they have four or more students, they get the stipend for the day. So this is just as a, as a way. It is an extra burden and hopefully this doesn't take the burden completely away, but it does make it just a little bit easier to take on. And we've had quite a few days this year where we've needed to utilize this provision and felt like this is a good, good way to do this. In prior years, we, the reason we probably didn't raise it is because it wasn't happening as much. So this is the first year it's happening a lot.
The reason I wanted it to be kind of explained a little because it sounded like we're paying them only $31. And I'm going, wait a minute, that's like child labor law. So just, I'm glad you're explaining it so that everybody understands what that is. I, I thought I knew that was what it was, but I thought for anyone seeing it, they'd be thinking, that's who we're paying the 14...
So basically, that's paid for them giving up their prep period, correct?
Right. Exactly. Or taking on additional students.
Or taking in the...
Which is not much, considering how much work they do.
So we have a speaker's card from Melinda Dart.
Hi, I'm Melinda Dart, AFT 3267. Yeah, we'd like to thank the board and the district for putting this on the agenda. This is really needed, particularly during the sub shortage that we're experiencing all over the state, perhaps even the country right now. It's, there are less people going into teaching and people have been hired for the extra positions under the LCFF around us. So there are many days when teachers make plans and prepare to come to professional development and then they don't get a substitute and in which case, they either have to go back to school or other teachers have to miss their prep and cover their classes or in the elementary, extra kids come to your class and you have to, you know, prepare for them. So it's really needed that we raise that rate and thinking ahead, it's really needed that we find a way to give professional development without having subs because it's too difficult. And I think we're all on the same page to think about that for the future. We need to find better ways to do it. And it's too bad the rate's not raised for tomorrow because I think we're going to need a lot of subs tomorrow.
Thank you, Melinda. Well, I would like to go ahead and make the motion that, that we, let me see if I can say it correctly, that we, we're going to raise the stipend for teachers who take on the, to cover substitute as a substitute, $31 to $40 effective January 5, 2015. And before we vote on it, I'd just like to say, I'm glad that this came to our attention because I have realized so much about the shortage of subs. I am a sub in another district and I know how, last minute they can call you and how you have to get there. And, and when, same thing goes there, when they can't get a substitute, they have to either put other students in the class or they have to cancel some type of class. So this is important and I do think that Melinda's suggestion we ought to look into is not having to cover subs when you're trying to train so many teachers at one time because it's going to get worse, the situation. Let's see what we can do with whatever money we can find. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Classified personnel retirement, retirement request from Linda Filari, food service assistant, TE effective January 20, 2015, and request an appropriate resolution to prepare commending her for her years of service with the district. Ms. Filari has been employed by the district since 121391.
I'd like to make the motion that we approve for retirement purposes of Linda Filari, food service assistant at Thomas Edison effective January 2015 and the appropriate resolution to prepare commending her for many years of service. Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to congratulate them.
Congratulations.
Congratulations on your retirement.
So board member comments or reports?
I have none.
No, I don't need it. Vote this way. Persons wishing to adjust the board on closed session, and we have no speaker card for that. So at this point, we will convene to closed session and we will convene in the memory of Thomas R. Polisita, former principal of Coma Intermediate School, which is now Thomas R. Polisita for the school.